I'd like to call to order the August meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. And as we begin, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and share something we're reading, if we care to. So Fred, how about we start with you?
I'm Fred Reisner, and I have just finished a biography of Tori Washington.
I'm Esther, and I am reading a book for work called, and I had to write it down, the impacts cycle, what instructional courses should do to impact learning.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I just picked up, it's called 100 Days of Real Food. It's about identifying processed foods and things like that.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I am currently reading a book called, and I know it has a subtitle, I can't think of what it is, but it's called The Five Types of Nonfiction. And even in my library career and everything, I really never realized there were five types of nonfiction. So it's really interesting, and I'm hoping to use it to impact my classroom.
My name's David Ferguson, and I'm reading Archie Meets Nero Wolfe. It's about Nero Wolfe is a series of detective novels.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I'm also reading work-related material right now on well-managed schools.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm rereading the Yamazanayamas Yoga Practice.
All right, well, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda items, where we will look to approve the minutes of the July 21st board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personal report, and the 2021 board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve these items?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor of approving these items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll turn it over to Marilyn for the monthly director's report.
So as you can see from the report, our usage is increasing, or slowly picking up. And Chris Jackson's here to give us a report about outreach later in the meeting, but he'll be able to tell you also a little bit about how we're slowly returning to some of our former services, and also a bit about the tremendous appreciation that's being shown for those services just across the library. Services returning in July included our tween space, the learn and play space reopened, the baby space reopened, and our teen space reopened. We also had our first library program at the Southwest Branch. It was Stories Outdoors, and we had 21 people attending, and they were very happy for the stories which were told by members of the Bloomington Story Writers Guild, Storytellers Guild, excuse me. And one family even shared that they, the plans that they had for building a new home in the neighborhood were solidified when they learned that there was going to be a branch in that space. So we also have lots of other outdoor story times in various locations, so we have really been trying to be where people are, including with community partnerships. There were a couple of things that happened, particularly, one of the more recent ones was in June, when we had the flooding, the Boys and Girls Club lost all of their books, and so we were able to provide them with new copies of several, several new copies of materials for their use that they would not otherwise have had. So I'm happy to answer any other questions?
I just have a couple of comments that I noticed that I'd like to highlight. It sounded like all 10 community outreach are going, and some of them are no contact, but hey, it's going, so that's fantastic, fantastic. And I was supposed to give a big shout out from a couple of groups I'm involved in for the library Tinder. Tinder, I mean, those are just amazing. You get a bag of books.
And goodies.
And goodies kind of tailored to your interests, and there's quite a waiting list for that.
Whereas the signup goes very quickly.
Yep, so, and then the role-playing game kits, that looks like lots of, lots of cool stuff, so.
Our library of things continues to expand, and it's being more used.
Yep, it's awesome. So that's all my comments.
I'd just like to add, that is inspiring for daily learning and playing at my house, so.
That's exciting.
Mm-hmm. It has been.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will move on to old business, and on the agenda, we're going to switch things up just a little bit. And so we're going to start with the branch planning update also from Marilyn.
Okay, so, advertisement for bids has been published twice now for the Southwest Branch, and on Monday, we held a required meeting for bidders. We had three general contractors and several subs who came, and all of them have expressed interest in bidding. Our bids are due on August 31st. Excuse me, I have a tickle. But some interesting things came out of our conversation, which I just want to share with you, because I think they're going to be things that we have to consider just because of the environment that we're in right now. And they, the contractors described the many supply chain problems that they have right now, and they seem to change daily. So they've had issues with steel, issues with concrete, issues with the infrastructure for cabling and piping. It just changes from day to day. And so setting schedules will be difficult for us, we can expect that. I think one of the points made was that their industry continued to work during the pandemic as an essential service, but the suppliers, in many cases, didn't. So those suppliers are just trying to catch up now. And also, their costs are coming in higher, so, you know, we'll, we'll hold our fingers and our breath for a little while until we find out what those bids and the estimates are. But contractors, they made a good point, that contractors are at greater risk this, these days, because, particularly because of delays and price hikes, all of which is still unknown for us, but they just wanted to let us know before we received the bids. So I think overall, as we've talked about with the architects already, we have, we will probably have to be prepared for, to do some value engineering, or to identify things that we may need to adjust, just because of the estimates as they come in. And I'm really happy for that friend's pledge at this point, that gave us a little bit more latitude.
Any questions or comments regarding the branch planning? Okay, next, we'll move on to the 2022 budget review, and we're going to turn that over to Gary Lutler.
So last month, we went over the first draft of the 2022 budget, and we'll go over it again next month when we have the public hearing. So tonight, I was going to focus on the new information that we have had since last month. So the big news on the 2022 budget this month is that we have the assessed value figure. And with that, then, we know the tax rate for 2022. And so just to kind of go over these numbers, so on the top, in 2021, assessed value increased by nearly $500,000, or $500 million. It increased by 6.69%. And then in 2022, again, it increased by nearly $1.5 billion, and 6.05% increase. So in two years, it's gone up nearly a billion dollars, so that's huge. And what it's had-
Sorry, Gary, did you go to the microphone?
Sorry. So what's happening is, when the, so with an 8.36 billion assessed value for 2022, the, the rate of increase is higher than the growth quotient, which is 4.3%. So by the assessed value going up 6.05%, it, it has caused the tax rate to drop. So the tax rate for 2021 was 9.42, and it's dropping to 9.25. Yes.
Oh, I just got a question.
Yes.
Are the property tax caps affecting this?
Yes, this is, is good news for the effect of property tax caps, because by it dropping, it, fewer people are in that category where it causes a tax cap. So this is good news for taxpayers. So this is just kind of the trend with assessed value. And last year, at this time, we were projecting 8 billion for 2022. So it's turned out to be 8.36 billion. So we, I have increased the projections going forward, which puts us, originally, we were saying 9 billion in 2026, and now it looks more like 9.25 billion, so that's, again, it's good news for taxpayers. I'm not going to get into the detail of the budget too much unless there are any questions about any part of the 2022 budget that anybody may have. So the next, it will be the new business, and when we get to that, we'll talk about the public notice.
For the budget review. Okay, then we will move on to new business, and new business is the approval to publish the notice to taxpayers for the 2022 budget. So do we have a motion to approve this publication of this notice?
Second.
Okay, so Gary, we'll go ahead and let you explain that.
So if this notice is approved, we will, the next step will be to publish it, and the notice can be seen online at budgetnotices.in.gov. We will also have it on the library website. The budget notice provides information about the time and place for the September public hearing on the budget, and the October meeting where the board adopts the budget. And it also shows the spending and tax levy estimates for 2022. Any questions on this notice?
The publication, the publication for the notice to taxpayers for the 2022 budget, signify by saying aye, please. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, thank you so much, Gary. Next, we will have an update from our special audiences strategist, Chris Jackson.
My name is Chris Jackson, Special Audiences Strategist here at Monroe County Public Library, and it's always a pleasure to get to update you, catch you up on the things that are going on with library services outside of our two buildings here in Elletsville. So I'm going to review each of those, and how we've modified services on account of COVID, and then where things stand now, looking forward. I'm going to start with our house calls service. Now, that may be a new name to you. It's what we formerly called the homebound service. We had long been looking for a new name. Homebound, to me, it implies ropes, people bound. It doesn't have a positive connotation, and it, and it labels the people who are getting the service often inaccurately. However, we didn't want to overpromise. Every time we thought of a new name, the word delivery came up, because that's what it is, it's a delivery service. And especially now with Grubhub and DoorDash and everything else, and Amazon Prime, people have the expectation they can get anything and everything delivered wherever they live. We can't offer that quite yet, maybe someday, but, but we're not there. So there are limitations. You need to qualify for the service by either having a disability or a chronic illness that affects your ability to get to our other library locations. It's not something that anyone can sign up for, though, not surprisingly, in the last 18 months, we've had a lot of people ask for the service. House calls seem to hit the right note. We actually borrowed it from another library that came up with it, and for those old enough like me to remember when doctors used to make house calls, it does imply some sort of medical issue, which is often the case here. But I like the fact that it describes what we do, we make a call to your house, rather than describing the people who receive the service. Other than that, though, the service hasn't changed all that much. We shut it down like we did everything in March of 2020, and then because this population, like many of our outreach populations, was at exceptionally high risk, we had to think very carefully about how we could restart it in a way that didn't compromise the, the health of people getting the service. So we did restart it in July of last year with several modifications. Previously, we would usually go into somebody's house, a staff member would go in to make the exchange of items, and often to chat a little bit, ask about how we did with the last set of deliveries, find out if we could modify things better. And oftentimes, there was a real social component. Sometimes there was tea and cookies, which was not something we expected, but was a fun thing for both the staff and the, and the person receiving the service. We also had a number of volunteers doing the delivery who had more time to make it a socially beneficial service. Unfortunately, we had to cut all that out, so it is now just a drop-off of materials at the door. We have everything bagged up, and we take the further precautions of quarantining the bags for four days before we deliver them, so we check out everything four days in advance. We deliver on Fridays, we have four different routes go to one-fourth of the people on the service every Friday. So on the Monday of that week, everything is checked out sometime before or up until that, that Monday, bagged up, and then it sits for four days with, with no one going into the bag. We also take the extra step of heat treating all the bags once they come back at a, at a temperature that, that is shown to, to kill the COVID virus. We actually started implementing that because we've had a few instances of bedbugs or other insects in some of the materials we've left, and we did some research and found out that the device we used could also affect COVID. So a year ago, 16 months ago, the, the concern about transmission of the virus through things like books was much higher than it is now, and we know that airborne transmission is the, the primary means. But we built these procedures in and see no reason not to follow them, just as a, as an extra safety step. Not surprisingly, given the health concerns of this audience in particular, demand for the service has been high, and we've added 24 people to homebound since we restarted it last July. Unfortunately, we've lost almost as many people from the service. In many cases, we are serving people towards the end of their lives, so it's not surprising, and the death rates for this population have gone up. Often, we're not sure why, when somebody's no longer on the service, they move away, they move out of county, maybe they move out of state, maybe they move to a facility that gets library services from some other mechanism. So these are not all COVID deaths, but the overall numbers, we have 96 people currently on the service, and that's just a little higher than we normally average. We circulated about 21,000 items over the last 12 months to the house calls population, and that also is about, about standard for us over the last few years. Next service I wanted to discuss was our van service, so that's the one that Carrie mentioned where, in the director's report, we finally got back to all 10 sites that we serve with the van. Van service is distinct from bookmobile service in that it specifically goes to senior and assisted living communities, and rather than having people come onto the vehicle, we take carts of books and audiobooks and movies and music off the vehicle and set them up in the lobby or a meeting room of a senior or assisted living community. That's what we normally do at these 10 locations, these 10 assisted living, senior living facilities around the county. Obviously, that wasn't something we could do safely in the old mechanism. We'd set up, and there'd be a social component to it there as well, with people telling us what they liked, sharing their favorites amongst themselves. We had to switch that to a, a no-contact service as well, so it's actually now very similar to the house call service in that we're bagging things up four days ahead of time, and instead of delivering them to individuals, we're giving them to the staff of the facility, who then do the distribution to their residents and gather up the materials that are due back to us. So some of these sites, as you know, were hit extremely hard by COVID. One in particular had devastating numbers. That was the last one to get back on the service just recently, but we are back to all 10. If you'd asked me if this were June instead of August, I would say that in a couple of months, I hope we'll be back to the, to the old lobby stop model with the carts and the social contact. Obviously, the numbers have gone in the wrong direction, so as with all these services, we're not sure when we'll return to normal, but we are able to offer a service that meets the need. The numbers there have gone up significantly. We circulated 12,000 items to van patrons over the last 12 months. That's about 2,000 higher than normal, and in thinking about why, the numbers of, of residents have actually gone down on the service, but the demand for materials is higher because for many of these folks, there's just no social component to their life anymore. I mean, it's been almost locked in your room, not literally locked, but none of the social gathering that was allowed before has been allowed until some places were opening it up recently, and some places are now closing it back down for the obvious reasons. So having high-quality literature, having some movies, having some music to watch, it makes a huge quality of life difference to this audience under normal circumstances, and so many more times now, given, given how difficult life is in many of these facilities. You might remember that last year, last fall, I came before you to talk about a replacement vehicle for our van, and you approved a, a contract with Farber Specialty Vehicles for a, a new van. Our current vehicle is 17 years old, and it's still running, but it, it looks, it looks 17 years old, quite frankly, and we're not sure how many more years we'll be able to get out of it. We knew when we, when we signed the contract, they let us know that the availability for the, really, the only vehicle we felt meet, that meets our needs, it was not good a year ago in that the company was retooling the assembly line. Best-case scenario was we were going to get it last May, but those same distribution and manufacturing supply issues that, that Marilyn referenced in terms of the new branch are affecting automakers as well. I did actually speak with them just this week, and they say they're, they're on track, which was the same, same, same thing we heard a couple of months ago, for our vendor to get the vehicle the end of this month, and they need about a two-month turnaround time to outfit it to our specifications. So we think we're on track to get it before the end of the year, hopefully in November. So I would love to be able to put it to use to its full capabilities right away, hopefully, but, but we'll see how things go there. Next up, I wanted to talk about the jail, so the jail library service. This is a partnership with the Monroe County Correctional Center. For the partnership, the jail provides a budget of $8,000 a year. That's in their annual budget, and they just write us a check, and then we spend that money throughout the year to do collection development, to buy the books that go into the jail library. In addition to doing the collection development, we staff the jail library three days a week and do readers advisory in person with the inmates at the jail. So that's the normal jail library scenario. Obviously, that's another high-risk population with a lot of concerns about transmission of the disease in the close quarters of the jail. Like everything else, we cut it off in March of last year. We had some plans to restart it that were then delayed because of some, some positive COVID cases at the jail, but we did restart with a modification in August, so, so one year ago now. And we did what was called a crate service at that time, where it was no contact for us in that we didn't have any direct contact with the patrons there or the staff. We would go in and have access to the jail library, and then put together literally milk crates of books for each of the cell blocks at the jail, and include specific titles that inmates in those blocks had requested, but no face-to-face contact, very limited contact with the jail staff, except for letting us in and out of the places in the jail we needed to get to. That was so much better than nothing. Again, this is a population that didn't have very much to do and had extra safety precautions, limiting the few, the few activities that used to be available to them, so a service that was in extremely high demand by the inmates and also by the staff. We were hearing a lot of complaints that it wasn't as good as before, so just in June of this past year, we've increased it to a next level. Still not quite what it was. Under normal circumstances, three inmates at a time would come into the jail library, which is a very small room, probably about one-fourth the size of this large meeting room with just crammed floor to ceiling with books, not a place where you can maintain six feet of separation, given the limited time and the maximum browsing that, that people want to do. So instead of that, we're doing something that kind of resembles the van service under the lobby stop model, where we'll take carts, library carts of material, of materials out of the library and set them up in a much larger recreation room, which is about half the size of this space, so that the patrons there can still have a browsing experience. We're there with them, but we can easily maintain much more than six feet of separation, and if they're not finding a title on the carts that they want, the, the library staff member can go into the library and try to find that title or that author that they're looking for. So a much better service than it was before, even though it's not full browsing, and I think we're doing a really good job of, of meeting the demand there now. And finally, our last major service point for, for special audiences is the bookmobile. That's the one that's the most visible and, and the most heavily used. We sort of have an unofficial slogan for the bookmobile that we put the county in Monroe County Public Library, and we do that by getting to those remote communities that are far away from Bloomington or Elletsville, places like Steinsville and Unionville and Harrodsburg and, and Stanford. We've been doing some of those stops for close to 100 years now. Our centenary, centennial anniversary will come up in, in, what, seven, eight more, yeah, eight more years, so that'll be a big party. Starting to think about that now. But we get to those places where a lot of residents are not able to come to Bloomington or to Elletsville on a regular basis, so we are their library. In addition to that, we specialize in going to low-income communities, wherever they are in the county, so many of the larger low-income communities have a weekly bookmobile stop. There are 28 stops that we get to, each one of them every week. We restarted that service back in June with our regular schedule, but modified it so that it was primarily just pickup of held items, so you could go online, place a hold on a book or, or movie that you wanted. We bring it out to your bookmobile stop, you could also call into the library, but we didn't have any direct browsing so that we could maintain that six feet of separation minimum, which really isn't possible in the truck under normal circumstances. Occasionally, we would do mediated browsing, where someone would say, hey, do you have a large print cozy mystery, or hey, do you have a horror film? And if we weren't too busy helping too many people, we would try to do that, but the demand for browsing has been very high. A significant number of our users are not online to place their own holds. They are really dependent on browsing the truck. They really like that experience. In fact, we really emphasize that by rotating all the items on the truck, so there's new items to browse, hopefully almost every week that people come on. We did just start getting back to a minimal browsing in June of this year. It's still limited in that only one family at a time can come on, or two adults who are not from the same household. Some of our stops previously were very busy, where we would have maybe a dozen people on the truck, and it was elbow room only. Obviously, that's not something we can do under these circumstances, but people have generally been understanding and, and realize that they need to hurry a little bit to, to make room for the next people and let us get, get to the next stop on time. And so it's going well. Our circulation is down on bookmobile. We're, we did about 80,000 circs in the last 12 months. Normally, we'd expect closer to 100,000 in a 12-month period, but I'm not terribly surprised, given the, the change in the services that we could provide. Once we're back to normal, I think the demand is still there for us to get back to those numbers that, that we were used to. So those are the four service points. Any questions about any of the ways we provide service outside of our, our branches to the county? I wanted to finish up. In addition to those outreach services, I am the library's ADA coordinator, and as part of that, I have a lot of community partnerships and, and do programs with those partners. We haven't been able to successfully do some of the programs that we did pre-pandemic. We tried things like Caregiver University and some of our dementia-friendly programs, and I used to do an audiobook book club that was especially for blind people or people with limited vision. The demand for doing those on Zoom was not very good, so after, after some attempts, we, we, we thought, well, we'll wait it out, and of course, we didn't think we'd be waiting this long. We are returning- We are returning to in-building programs library-wide starting in next month. So some of these programs will start up. I've got a new series on autism that starts up next month. We will be doing a, a day-long Caregiver University workshop. I do hope to get back to the dementia-friendly films and autism-friendly films that we used to do. None of those are scheduled yet. We want to see, see how the numbers go. But we have been able to do some partnership programs outside of the building. I serve on the, on the executive committee of the Bloomington Council for Community Accessibility. We had a huge initiative last year where we surveyed all of the polling places countywide to maximize ADA access issues, suggested changes for all of them. And in fact, they moved some of the polling places to other locations to improve access. So very happy to have been involved in that. We recently did a sidewalk survey, survey for seven different Bloomington neighborhoods to look at the issues that exist in getting from your home to a public transportation spot or your closest store. So that was a great way for the community to be aware of access issues that they can possibly address themselves or bring to the attention of, of other people who can. And then just a couple of weeks ago, we had an ADA anniversary celebration outside by the, by the bears, right there, with a bunch of other disability partner organizations, something we've hosted other locations before, but really glad to do that at the library. And I've continued my work with Dementia Friendly Indiana with some, some virtual programs they've done as well. So when I come here and talk to you, it's, it's me, it's Chris Jackson, and I always feel that's so not fair to all the people at the library who work on access and who work on outreach services. We have an extremely dedicated staff. And accessibility is one of our core values, inclusiveness is another core value. I am so glad, elated, and sometimes humbled by how deeply so many, really all of our staff, take these values and incorporate it into the way they provide services to the public. And the people who do the special audiences work, which is sometimes not as visible to, to the rest of the library, sometimes is a, a little bit cut off, but they know they're making positive differences in people's lives, and, and they take that to heart, and their dedication and commitment is, is truly astonishing to me. So I'm honored to be able to work with them. Happy to answer any questions if there's anything? All right, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I do appreciate the, the change in the name from Homebound Services to House Calls. I think that's a, that's definitely a positive step for that program. And just to thank you and your staff for all that you've done to help these special audiences continue to receive services during our difficult times. Thank you so much. Okay, now we've reached the portion of our meeting that it's time for a public comment. Do we have any members of the public who would like to step forward to the podium and give us your name? And in three to five minutes, give us your comments. Anyone on Zoom?
We have none.
Then do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.